So if we're all here, Eileen, we're ready to kick off the meeting. Can you start with the opening statement, please?
Yes, zoning board of adjustment Monday, August 22nd, 2022, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and a decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti. Absent. Mr. Roscoe is excused. Mr. Stanton.
Here, sorry, my daughter got something stuck in her hair. I apologize.
Mr. Rubel.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yeah.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Will everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Bear, can we have a swearing in of the zoning board professionals, please?
Yes, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Your professionals are sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Is there any correspondence?
No correspondence tonight.
Okay, so then we're jumping to item eight. Resolutions. Case number BA 22-05, Howell Township Development LLC. This is a resolution granting use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variances. Eligible voters Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Stanton, Rubel, and Sayah. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve, sir.
Hughes.
Second.
Roll call three, Eileen.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes, Mr. Moretti is having trouble getting into the, into the, uh, the meeting. Can we just take a look real quick?
It's Moretti, right?
Mm-hmm. I don't see him in the attendees. I don't know.
There's a person in the attendees with his hand up. Manny Chakra. Maybe that's him.
No, I don't think so, but we.
I mean, I don't know what that, the hands up for.
It's probably an application.
Maybe.
You just put it down.
All right, so you let him into the meeting. Um, who does Mr. Chopper represent?
All right, you should get him out. I could tell right from the jump, it's not, it's not worth it.
Eileen, let's move. All right, up in front of the board, applications before the board, case number BA 18-23 SP Sweet Home Home Daycare Center, Inc. Charlie, you think you want to do this one last? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I think we should do the extension of time real quick, Clearview Equities, and then, uh, I would say we should do the sign variance. I think that one could be relatively quick.
All right.
And then this one did have some public on the last one, so, uh, you know, might be best to delete, let it go last.
I agree.
Okay, great. So for everyone that's out there waiting for these applications that are on the agenda tonight, we're going to reorder the agenda. We're going to start off with case number BA 18-03 Clearview Equities LLC. This is an extension of time. Application of Clearview Equities LLC as applicant and Tri-M Real Estate Services, Inc. As owners seeking a one-year extension of time on their bulk variance approvals to construct a single-family residence with a septic system. Approvals were granted in a resolution memorialized on April 23rd, 2018 on premises known as Block 24, Lot 5, Alexander Avenue. Eileen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's Kenneth Pape. This is my application. May I begin?
You may begin, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, good evening. Kenneth Pape, this is an application requesting an extension of time for the protections that were granted by this board in 2018 to construct a single-family residence on a 14,000-square-foot building lot. The relief that was granted was, it was the result of a presentation of an architect, an engineer, and an architect, an engineer, and a planner. And the board, in their resolution, crafted a number of conditions to make certain that the size of the home and the characteristics of the home, its size and its location, were not only consistent with the size of the lot, but were consistent with the neighborhood in which it was situated. The, the resolution is a very detailed, long resolution filled with requirements. Politely, and not to, not to, not to bring up the same excuse more than necessary, but life got in the way the last three years. And when our client realized, when our client was ready to build, he realized that this resolution had a requirement to return to the board to request extensions of the relief. That's the final language in the resolution. When he came to see me in July, we promptly made that application to this board. I can tell you that he is ready to proceed at this time. We respectfully ask that the board consider favorably this single extension of the relief that was granted with all the conditions that were previously imposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, and just to clarify for the board, so this property is in the R2, so not only was it deficient from the lot area requirement in the zone, I think 20,000 square feet was required where the existing lot was 14,500 square feet. As part of that application, the applicant do do their due diligence with buy-sell letters and everything like that. Um, what also complicated this more, it's not in the area map sewer service area, so it's subject to the ARE in terms of lot area, front, rear, and side yard setback. Um, the applicant, um, you know, addressed many of the board's concerns as part of the application. Um, we did issue a letter of compliance back in December of 2018. So really, uh, you know, they're ready to build. It's just a matter of, uh, you know, does the board want to grant the one-year extension? And Mr. Pape, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's from the date of the hearing today that you're seeking the one-year extension from.
We are asking for that relief because there's no statutory, uh, language on this type of an application. So we're asking if, if the board were to grant the relief that the one-year begin tonight.
And Mr. Sayah just put on a record, to my knowledge, uh, public sewer has not been made available in this vicinity of town, so nothing has changed since then.
This is where we were hoping that perhaps maybe it would come that way, right?
I can tell you there's been extensive stuff up in the Freewood Acres section of town, up by, uh, you know, East, what, 6th and 7th, uh, up, up in that area town, but I don't, I don't think anything has come inwards of Route 9, uh, along Alexander or Maxim Southern since that.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as, uh, Mr. Pape noted, um, there is no legal impediment to granting this, uh, extension. Uh, these are bulk variances, so the board has the discretion to do so. So yeah, if, so long as the conditions haven't changed and Charlie is satisfied, um, I would, it's, it's within the board's discretion and legally, it's certainly something you can do.
Thank you, sir. Jen?
I have no comment. I'm good with it.
Okay, and Shari, you're good?
I have no comment.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I could just quickly just make a note to Eileen that Mr. Moretti is in the waiting room? I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but.
Uh, yes, we keep trying to promote him, but he won't come in, or he can't get in.
All right, sorry for the interruption.
Okay. Okay, so does any of the board members have any questions? And what's the pleasure of the board, if you should have none?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have no questions, and I have, we could just go ahead and make a motion to, uh, grant the extension.
Mr. Hughes, makes a motion.
I'll say it.
We got a second. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for taking that early.
You got it.
I think I have your next one, too.
Well, we're going to go to Route 70 Properties. That's case number BA 22-10, Route 70 Properties LLC. This is a variance for a pylon sign. Description. Application of Route 70 Properties LLC as applicant and owner seeking bulk variant approval to demolish two existing pylon signs and construct one pylon sign, which requires bulk variance relief from the setback to their, Route 9 right away and from the maximum permitted sign area on premises known as Block 135, Lot 15 dot 01, 2400 U.S. Highway 9 South. Expansion date, expiration date is December 8th, 2022. Is this yours, Mr. Pape?
It is, Mr. Chair. Thank you. If we could promote Justin Osziello and Stuart Challoner, they are the planner and engineer respectively. Eileen, can you see that? There they are. I don't see Stuart.
There.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, good evening all. This is an application by Route 70 Properties to take down their two existing signs, which are politely old and tired and out of date. They're actually neon, old, tired, out-of-date signs, and to replace it with one artistically designed sign that is designed to match the, uh, the building that are on the, on the property. And before I begin, we had delivered our proofs to Ms. Rubano on August 8th, and if you could confirm on the record that jurisdiction is established by our notices.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. This application is to take those two old signs down and put up one new sign. There are two variances that are identified by Mr. Cunliffe's letter. I'll start by telling you that one of them, upon examination with Mr. Challoner, is unnecessary. That the 17.5 foot setback from Highway 9, which is two and a half feet deficient, is withdrawn. Mr. Challoner will confirm that he is able to move the sign back two feet, so that variance is not required. We will ask for variance for the size of the sign. We have 22 storefronts. We have 22 storefronts, and we have a sign that has been designed to have clear visibility at the bottom so that we don't impede traffic or, or the traveling public. We then have 22 panels that are side by side, 11 side by side, and each of them is 18 inches high to accommodate a font of 10 to 12 inches to identify the tenant. So the sign was not just made up, the sign was designed to accommodate the 22 storefronts and create an opportunity for each of those stores to have identification with a size, a font size that made it easily visible from the highway. And we, we've been told that the font size that's appropriate for a 50-foot highway is 10 to 12 inches. That is, I stole the thunder of Mr. Challoner and.
And I just have one issue, like, there, there should be seasonal plantings at the base of the sign. Are you guys not going to propose that?
We saw that in the report. We think it's an excellent idea. We, reason that landscaping was left out is we wanted to have that clear window under the sign. But if we could work with Ms. Spiro, we could come up with a planting, something that maybe never exceeds 30 inches, something that is groomed, and we could do the entire base as a landscape base.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so we're eliminating the two old ugly signs. We're creating a sign, a new sign. With, with that, if we could introduce Mr. Challoner and put his testimony on, when we'll introduce Mr. Osziello and go through the planning proofs.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Challoner, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
My name is Stuart Challoner, C-H-A-L-L-O-N-E-R. I'm the engineer, site engineer for this project.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Pape and Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Challoner's testified before this board previously as an engineer. Would you like his credentials on the record this evening?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Challoner, as a professional engineer, please share your education and professional background.
Sure. Um, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering. Uh, I've been licensed since 1989. I've owned my own engineering company since 1994. I've appeared in front of, uh, this board many times in the past. Um, and I was in front of this board, actually even for the, uh, the reconstruction of the site while we did the renovation.
We'll accept your credentials, Mr. Challenger.
Thank you. Mr. Challenger, your, your license is in good standing today.
Yes, it is.
If you could, I think we have one, one plan that we filed. It's a sign variation plan, and on it, there's clear descriptions of the two signs that we wish to remove and the new sign that we wish to add. And it also has details of that sign. Could you screen share that, Mr. Challoner?
Probably.
Eileen, are you available as a backup if you struggles?
Is there? I don't have a button that says screen share.
Ken, you're trying to show the, the sign plan exhibit?
Yes.
You can share it.
She has it.
Very much. So we need to scroll down so you could.
Scroll, scroll to the right.
Scroll to the right.
There you go.
Okay, and we also have to get, we have to, we need to get to Route 9, which is the bottom of the page, so scroll up. There we go.
All right.
All right. So Stuart, if you could just walk us through the two signs to be removed, and I'm going to, you identify the one that is right smack in the middle of the site triangle, and if you could show the new sign that is proposed, location and details.
So this property is located on New Jersey State Highway Route 9 South. It's known as the House Center. Uh, it has two existing pylon signs. The first pylon sign is north of the driveway uh, that you can see it's identified as to be removed. It's inside the existing site triangle. The second existing sign is just outside of the, uh, site triangle on the south side of the driveway. Also a pylon sign. Both of those signs are to be removed. The applicant is proposing to install a new sign just south of the driveway, just south of the existing sign. Um, on the plan, it shows 17 and a half foot setback. Uh, the, we discussed it with the applicant today. We're going to slide the sign back to put the, the pylon for the sign immediately behind the curb, but we can meet the, the 20-foot setback that's required. Um, and that will just be one single sign outside of the side triangle, locate it on the south side of the driveway. And then on the north, or should say the, uh, the upper right portion of this plan is the detail of the sign. It is a double column pylon sign. Uh, the architecture of the sign has been created to match the, uh, the new renovation of the, of the center that happened several years back. Uh, it will have the 20, as Mr. Pape indicated, will have the 22 individual locations. Uh, each of those slots is 18 inches tall. The sign is, the physical sign is 20 by 15. The total's height of this structure is 29 foot by 15. And that, and that is our proposal.
So, but you have agreed then to comply with the plantings around the base, right?
That's correct. We could, we could provide low plantings around the base. And we'll keep it something around 30 inches, something about two and a half feet.
So therefore, the, the only relief that you're asking for is the size, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Ken, and just to jump real quick, uh, Stu, you said the, uh, I guess the westernmost support of this sign is now going to be behind the curb line, so is that going to be in a parking space?
No, 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 no. Right now, it's, it has like a two-foot setback to the, to the, to the back edge of the curb. We're going to slide it so it's, it beats the back edge. There's, there's space there now. Originally, we had the, the, uh, footing of the sign outside of the curb, but now we're going to take the curb away so the footing could actually be in place, but the pylon will be right at the back base of the.
Okay, so any overhang of the sign, if it is into the space, will be at a height where it's not going to impact, like, someone being able to park there, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we're, we're not anticipating any, any intrusion into the parking space.
Okay, and then I had a comment in my letter about shifting the sign to give a little bit more buffer from the site triangle. So would you say shifting it westerly gives us some additional buffer from the site triangle there as well?
Sure, yes.
Yeah. You can keep going.
Okay, so Stuart and I have had the privilege for about 20 years of representing Felix Bruce Olowski, who's the owner of this center. Felix has a reputation for doing the right thing. When he bought this center in 2007, the first thing that he did is came before this board and asked for permission to do a complete facelift on the entire center. And he did that complete facelift, and he's maintained it in a very nice, very, very nice condition. This is, this is the next step. The signs are tired. They are tired. And this is, the sign is designed to be the colors and materials that were used for the reef, reef facade of the center. With that, Mr. Chair, I do have Justin Osziello, our planner, who is here to place the necessary proofs and statements to support the variance relief that we're requesting. With your permission, I'll move to Mr. Osziello.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. If Mr. Osziello could be sworn, please.
Yes, please raise your right hand. I don't see him, but.
Oh, me neither. Where'd he go?
Can you see me?
We're going to clear.
Here he is.
He's up top. There we go.
Maybe, do you need that exhibit up still or no? Is that for the planner as well?
Um, the, the best would be the, the architectural portion.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Osziello, do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, state your name for the record and spell your.
Justin Osziello, that's A-U-C-I-E-L-L-O.
Mr. Osziello, please share with all of us your education and professional background.
Absolutely. Um, I am a, um, a licensed, uh, planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since, uh, 2008. Uh, I have a master's degree in planning from Rutgers University, uh, that was earned in, uh, 2005. Um, I've really been involved in all facets of, of planning practice, from, uh, from master planning, uh, to, uh, to redevelopment planning and pretty much everything in between. Uh, I've appeared, um, at this board on multiple occasions, and I've also appeared at your planning board. Um, and I've appeared, uh, at, at probably about 200 boards, uh, in the state of New Jersey in the course of my career.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Osziello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Osziello, if you'd share that statement, your license is in good standing today.
Yes, it is.
Fine, I'm going to ask if you would in a narrative fashion. I think the board has a clear understanding of the applicant's relief. If you could in a narrative fashion indicate the proofs that this applicant must deliver to this board, and then take us through those proofs, and finally, if you could conclude with your opinion.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so, uh, we're here tonight, uh, one variance, uh, for sign area, um, for, for this one sign. Uh, the, um, the maximum sign area that is permitted is, uh, 300 square feet, uh, and, uh, 600 square feet, uh, is proposed, um, 300 on, uh, on, um, on each side. Excuse me, if I can go back for a second, uh, maximum permitted is, uh, eight zero, uh, square feet, so that's 80 square feet that, uh, that's the maximum, uh, permitted, uh, per, per your, uh, your zoning ordinance. Uh, as Mr. Pape had, uh, had indicated, uh, there are certain proofs, of course, that must be set on the record, uh, to prevail on the variance. Uh, of course, this is a bulk variance, um, not a use variance. Um, so it's a showing of the, uh, the positive and negative criteria. Essentially, it's, uh, known as, uh, as, um, flexi, essentially whether or not the, uh, benefits do outweigh the detriments. Uh, Mr. Pape and our engineer, uh, have both gone through the, the reasonings, um, you know, for the purpose of this sign. I think, uh, Mr. Pape, um, said it, said it perfectly. Uh, these two signs that currently exist on the site, uh, they're old, tired, and out of date. Um, you know, certainly, they don't really fit the character of, uh, of the shopping center, uh, as the owner has, uh, as up, as, uh, you know, updated and upgraded. In my opinion, uh, it's, uh, it's well-designed, uh, and the owner has, you know, continued to do a, a great job in, in, in keeping it looking nice. I think, um, by proposing, um, this new sign, which is attractive, and as you can see in the exhibit, um, that's on the screen right now, uh, the architecture does meet, uh, or is consistent with the architecture of the shopping center. I think importantly, um, going from, uh, from two signs, uh, uh, today, uh, to one sign, so that's, um, that's, uh, that's certainly, um, a, a vast improvement over, over the, over the current condition. Um, the, uh, the location, in my opinion, uh, is, is better suited, um, uh, you know, for the sign. Uh, the only variance, of course, that is required is, is for the sign area. Uh, we do, uh, we will meet, uh, the, uh, the setback. Uh, and as Mr. Pape had, had stated in his opening, um, the size of the sign is certainly, uh, necessary um, to, to accommodate the tenants. Uh, these tenants have leases, um, and, uh, you know, their, their business, you know, for the purpose of, uh, not only for the releases, but also for the, the motorists that are trying to find the site, uh, it's necessary. Um, I certainly, as you can see, uh, in the exhibit, um, that's on the screen, uh, I believe the sign is tasteful. Um, the size, the size for the tenant plates. The size, the size for the tenant plates is, you know, appropriate in order for motorists to see it properly. And of course, the placement of the sign in this location is intended to provide as much notice as possible to the motorists while respecting the site triangle. So certainly, you know, for the positive criteria, there are certainly purposes of zoning that are advanced. Criteria G, sufficient space, certainly for the sign. I think that's evidenced by the fact that it's without, it's not within the setback anymore. And it's, and its size appropriately, despite the fact, of course, that there is a need for the sign area variance. And the purpose of that, of course, goes to criteria H to promote the free flow of traffic. You know, certainly, this sign, we are going from two to one in this application. The size of the sign, of course, is necessary to have, you know, motorists, you know, see the sign and read the sign to determine whether or not they're going to, of course, turn into the shopping center. So I think the sign is scaled appropriately relative to the size of the shopping center and the number of tenants. And visual environment, a criteria I, I think it's a big one in this application. I think it's very clear that the sign is attractive. The sign is consistent with the style and the character of the shopping center. And of course, you know, the removal of two signs that, quite frankly, are unattractive with, you know, all due respect to the applicant, certainly, this is a vast improvement over that condition. So certainly, there are not just benefits for the property owner, but also benefits to the community and the corridor as well. So that's the positive criteria. For the negative criteria, certainly, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good. I think there are substantial benefits and improvements for this proposed sign. And lastly, relative to whether or not this will have a negative impact to the zoning ordinance in this own plan, it's consistent with the character of the zone, the HD one district. And certainly, this, you know, fulfills the purpose of promoting a modern, you know, shopping center that I think that the township can be proud of in this corridor. And I know a lot of planning from the master planning perspective has got in, you know, to setting a vision for this corridor. And I think if the board so chooses to grant the variance approval, it can be consistent, certainly, with the master plan vision.
If I may, Mr. Osceello, I just have one point that I wanted to make. I was, and the lighting plan, I kind of made a joke that it's neon lighting now. It really is. And this sign is designed to have internal LED lighting. I just want to make sure that fact was shared with the board. Mr. Chair, members of the board, that concludes the applicant's direct presentation. We respectfully ask that the board consider favorably our client's desire to construct the new sign, remove the old signs, and follow the good guidance that was provided by your staff this evening.
All right, Mr. Page, so we're going to have some questions here, right? And the first question I have is, hey, Jen? Are you, are you with us? Because I don't see you.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right, so Jen, I got twenty slots. I got twenty slots lit up and half the tenants are, is vacant. So I have bleed over, right? And, you know, and I hate to see these signs when they're,
Yeah.
you know, with nothing there. So how do you improve this process? Do you put, you know, slots in there to, you know, dummy slots where it says, where there's vacancy? You know how some people turn the sign around from when the tenant leaves, right? And kind of minimizes the splash of the light and so forth? What? There's no guarantee.
And so, but I will say this. Right now, there are two signs that are really, really crappy looking. So to get rid of the two and to put the one that looks much better, they've agreed to set it back to twenty feet. They've agreed to put the landscape around the base. If there are vacancies on that sign, regardless, sign's going to look better than it does now.
Yeah, but we could, Mr. Chair, we could agree to use blackout panels for those that are empty, so that it's not just, it's not just dead, dead space. We could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Let's open it up to the board members to see what questions they may have. Can I see the screen, please?
So whoever's sharing the screen, stop sharing.
Stu.
Do it.
You dropped, there you go.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rubell. Questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, just a question or a comment instead of blackout or leaving it blanked, it would make sense to allow them to put the information about how to acquire the empty space.
Oh, the telephone number or something to that effect.
Yeah, so that way it doesn't have to be empty.
Thank you.
Got it. Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, that would be my only thing too, and I like that idea, Mr. Cantor just brought up. That's, I mean, you know, the real estate professional only would say that, but, of course, but yeah, that was my only concern too, would be the light. Other than that, I'm familiar with it, because I've shopped in a few stores and they're all look nice. It'll be a nice upgrade.
Mr. Martins?
Yeah, I mean, I'm good. I think with the changes with the lighting, I think it's a great, I'm glad you brought it up. The only thing I just ask is, Sherry would probably be able to determine this better than me, but could we get at least four seasons on the shrubs underneath? To keep it looking, you know, green year round.
Sure, that, yeah, definitely we'll use shrubs as well as, you know, perennials.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Stanton?
I am good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Bear, should we open this up to public?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Moretti.
Hey, Jim Moretti, welcome.
I have been listening to this entire presentation, and I agree with everybody.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like a great move from moving those two signs to a one that's much more appropriate for the site.
Thank you, Mr. Moretti.
And, Mr. Chair, can I just make a couple of brief comments before you go to public? So I just wanted, I just want to know for the board, shopping centers less than a thousand feet of frontage are allowed to have one sign. They're eliminating the existing non-conformity of two signs. Also, one of those signs is in a site triangle. That's a better alternative from a safety perspective. Just as a condition of the approval, I had some plaque comments that were just adding the two hundred foot properties on the list to the plan, and then the two hundred foot map with the radius. I asked that that be provided. And then obviously, applicant's going to need to get any building permits for foundations and things like that, and provide an as-built once it's constructed. The one comment that I did have with the lighting, it is in a commercial zone. It's Route nine. You know, do you want any restriction on the sign turning off after close of business for the last tenant or anything like that, if you find it prudent? That would be my only comment.
We would have no objection to that. We do have restaurants in the center that are open, particularly on the weekends to later hours. But if we were to say one hour after close of business of the last tenant, that the sign, the sign panels are turned off, we would leave, we'd ask for permission to leave the center's identification, which is at the top on.
Correct. Yeah.
That would be fine.
That works. So. Charlie, you're done, yay? Okay. So may I have a motion open to public, please?
Motion to open to public, Mr. Chair.
I'll second. We got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Eileen, please open the public.
The meeting will be now open to the public. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
We'll give him a minute. Do you see anyone, Eileen?
No one's raising their hand from the public.
Okay, then. Can I have a motion to close the public, please?
Motion to close to the public.
Cantor?
Second.
We got a a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eileen, we're closed to public. Okay. So professionals, everyone is good. So then I would ask, what is the desire of the board on case number BA twenty-two dash ten?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that be approved. The request for a bulk variance for a pilot sign as applied for on BA twenty-two ten is all of the stipulations provided by the professionals.
We got a motion with all stipulations as provided by professionals and recorded by Mr. Bear. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Sorry, Mr. Hughes.
No, that's fine.
All right, that was second. Okay. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
And Chairman Saya.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all board members, board professionals, thank you all and good night.
Thank you.
Bye, Mr. Page.
Good night, Ken.
Bye-bye.
Wow, so, you know, we we've been driving past that for almost thirty years, and all the other signs were improving it along the nine corridor, and these two guys were just hanging out there, and I kept scratching my head as I passed it all the time. But that won't be happening anymore.
Situation solved.
Nice.
Okay, so last on the agenda, applications before the board, case number BA eighteen dash twenty-three SP, Home Sweet Home Daycare Center, Inc. This is a minor site plan. So let me read it here. The description. Application of Home Sweet Home Daycare Center, Inc. as applicant and Camp Royals Estates LLC as owners, seeking minor site plan approval to construct the various site improvements in accordance with the prior use and bulk variance approval obtained in two thousand and twenty-one to expand the existing daycare center by adding a solar roof canopy and bathroom addition, a classroom addition, a twenty-by-forty-foot pole barn, a twenty-by-twenty-foot concrete pad for a play structure, a refuse enclosure, an ID sign, and eight additional parking stalls on premises known as block one fifty-four, lot thirteen, three twenty-one, West Farms Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, when it was adjourned to August twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two with notice. Expiration date, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Eileen, who are we letting in here?
Walter Toto is the attorney.
Mr. Toto. You're muted, sir.
Rob Sibb should be brought in too.
Also, good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. Eileen, if you could also promote Erica Stahl, who will be providing planning testimony in addition to Rob Sibb, our engineer.
Okay, they're coming into the meeting.
Great. Also, we did submit an affidavit of service and publication to Ms. Rivano. Mr. Bear, is everything in order with regard to jurisdiction?
The board is jurisdiction, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. So as the board chairman indicated, this is a minor site plan approval. We do require bulk variance relief for a new or a second sign. It's actually a sign above the entrance of the building. And the applicant will testify as to why we believe that's necessary, primarily for safety of the kids. We've got a lot of incidents where people are coming to the site. Because right now, there are no signs. We do have one sign proposed, freestanding sign toward the front of the property. But we think the second sign would, above the entrance, would also help enhance safety. We don't want the public necessarily mixing with the kid.
I just interrupted. Erica, is there any way to move your camera down? All we can see is your forehead. There you go. Thank you.
So in any event, Eric will be testifying as to that. And the board did approve this pursuant to use variance relief and bulk variance relief in June of two thousand and twenty-one. We are prepared to comply and discuss, of course, the reports of Ms. Beam from July twentieth, Mr. Cunliffe from June nineteenth, and Ms. Spiro from August twelfth. And again, we may, we shall comply with those reports in their entirety. So, Mr. Chairman, right now, I asked Maria Campo Real, the applicant, to testify. And also, if Rob, if you could bring up the sign, because that's the crux of her testimony.
Signing up?
Uh, not yet.
Mr. Toto, you say that the applicant is with you or?
No, no, she, no, Mr. Chairman, Maria Campo Real should be, I don't know if she's been promoted into the meeting. I'm sorry. Ms. Rivano, could you address that, if you would?
Uh, it's not Ms. Rivano, it's Ms. Husa.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have the same first name.
Stop sharing his.
I think you have to stop sharing your screen for a moment. Sorry.
Yeah, let's, okay.
Eileen, also, Shari is, got booted out, and she's trying to get back in too. Okay.
Who is he looking for?
Shari.
I think he's looking for M. Camp, also the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
They're in the audience, they're in the attendees.
Here she is.
There we go.
Shari. I don't see Shari in there.
Oh, there she goes.
Oh, never mind. She's like, I'm working on getting back in.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you're all set.
All right, Mr. Toto, can we have the applicant sworn in, please?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Bear?
Camp, can you, you need to, you're muted. There you go. Can you please, Ms. Camp, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Could state your name for the record, spell your last.
Maria Camp Reale, C A M P O R E A L E.
Witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So Maria, before we get into the sign details, just with regard to the use variance that was approved in June, well, June fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, and there was a resolution of approval adopted June twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one. You're prepared to comply with all the conditions of that approval, of course, correct?
I am.
And then you're also willing to comply with Ms. Spiro's report with regard to providing two shade trees at the property and with regard to reseeding the lawn area when it's appropriate, correct?
I do.
Okay.
Wait, can we just go back?
Yeah.
So one of the requirements of that prior approval was the moving of the dumpsters.
Yes.
Yeah, that has not been done. And I drive by that place, I don't know, on the regular. It's not been done. The dumpsters are still in the same place they were. When are they going to get moved? Because they were supposed to be moved as part of the last approval. Hasn't been done.
Which included, which included, Jen, like the water containment as well, correct?
Yeah, but I mean, the dumpsters are like in the buffer against. Yeah, but I mean, the dumpsters are like in the buffer against the objecting, the objector. We asked you to move them. And I drove by today. They're still not moved.
Well, that has to be immediately, Jen. So Maria, could you answer that, please?
Yeah, uh, honestly, first I didn't know I I was allowed to do anything until this was all done and approved.
No, that's not true. That was, no, that was a condition of your prior approval. Your prior approval.
So again, I thought I had to wait for everything to be done before I was allowed to do anything.
That's not true.
And also, that is true.
That was not true.
Well, Jen.
Of your prior approval.
Well, Jen, I'll take.
Before.
Jen, I'll take.
Than the the drainage and the parking. Come on.
And then secondly, it, when I move the dumpsters, I'll be removing, uh, parking. So um, do like, you know, what comes first? Do I move the dumpsters and then not have parking? When the parking hasn't also, again, my understanding not approved yet.
Prior approval. That should have been done a year ago. You know it, I know it, everyone knows it. So enough.
I guess, perhaps I'm not understanding the process of how this goes. It's my first time ever being in front of a board about.
Not your first time, it's your second time. And Walter, this is on you. I called.
It is, it is. Yeah, I will take the blame for that. And Maria, I didn't guide her correctly. This has to be done. It will get moved tomorrow, quite frankly. So yeah. Uh, that's on me, absolutely, uh, for for the applicant, not necessarily understanding the dictates of the resolution. And in fact, I know we talked about it, Jen, probably a month after the, uh, the approval. So yeah, I acknowledge that. Uh, so yeah, that's on me, completely on me.
Mister Toto?
Yes.
If I recall correctly, this is where there was spillover to the neighboring property during heavy storm runoff, right? And we had some improvements that were supposed to be implemented to go ahead and control that storm runoff. Charlie?
Yeah, Mister Say, so and just to clarify, so originally when this application was filed, it was used variance with minor site plan. In the course of the application, the applicant decided to bifurcate for only the use. So there was a number of conditions that the app can agree to to address as part of the site plan. I think what Jen's saying is we're not, the expectation isn't for the applicant to move the dumpsters and and construct the trash enclosure. Just to move the dumpsters outside of the farm buffer along the easterly property line. So it's so it's not impacting the neighbor, uh, who has a farm proper to the east. As far as the storm management, um, the plan provided by Mister Siv with the application has addressed the board's concerns and my concerns with, you know, um, the condition was any additional impervious coverage proposed with the use variance application, the applicant would provide storage for the hundred year storm event to completely infiltrate that. So there would be no net increase in runoff from the site. So well, Mister Siv has provided on the revised plans, does address that. It's just they haven't constructed yet because we're here for site plan approval. They gotta get the residential compliance, then they can get their construction permits. So um, they're in that process. It just hasn't been constructed yet because we're now doing the site plan portion of the application.
Thank you, Charlie. Mister Toto.
So yes, Mister Chairman, and to Jen's point, Jen, we will move that literally tomorrow out of the buffer. So I understand your frustration. And again, that's on me. Uh, I hope that doesn't color the application, uh, poorly for my client because she's trying to, you know, improve the property. And I think the boards noted that in a resolution of approval. So just with going back to the sign issue. Maria, why do you think a facade sign is necessary at the property above the entrance?
Um, you know, for obvious reasons, when people are coming up to the center, I don't think they're really paying a much close attention to, you know, where they exactly are. I know during, um, uh, an election of some sort, a primary election, uh, you know, there was a voting place not too far from my location, but I had at least, you know, six plus people coming up to the door. Even though the doors locked from the outside, coming up to the door and asking if this is where the voting was taking place. And of course, I said no, but I just don't like or want anybody to come up to the center that has no purpose there for the safety of the children. Again, the door is locked from the outside. Uh, so it's not like they can come in, but I just don't want anybody. And I think having a sign there, you know, they look up, they're walking toward the, uh, door to open the door. They can look up and see that it's definitely not the I forgot, it was at some church or someplace that they were voting at or something like that.
Sure. So how, wait, so how far away is this place that you're talking about? Because I drive past your place on a regular basis. I'm not a hundred percent understanding where.
I don't know where they decide to, uh, make voting, uh, things. So I'm not familiar with the place either. They said it was some type of Baptist church or something that they were allowed to go vote at. I don't know. I said, I don't know. This is, you know, not it. And I closed the door. I don't, um, I don't decide where voting takes place. So I wasn't sure either.
I understand that, but I'm just asking like where they said they were voting because if I, I can't see any place remotely close to you that would be.
They said something along like a Baptist place. I don't know. I have no idea.
Okay, thanks.
Something, if you want, I could look back, you know, see if my ring doorbell could go back that far and, uh, you know, get video of it if you needed me to. But I don't know if it goes back that far. I think it was like November-ish time.
Maria, the sign would be non-illuminated, correct?
Yeah, nothing, nothing that illuminates, just a, um, you know, uh, I believe it's constructive of aluminum. I gotten some um, renditions made and some estimates done. And they say that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Continue.
And I think it depicts the, um, material.
Yes, it's five by six in size, five feet high and six feet wide.
Yeah, I would need to see this, um, honestly, bigger. But yes, it's, it's, it fits with, it fits within the, um, there's like a cove above the door.
Yeah, I'll come.
Yes, correct. That's correct.
Right, but you have to acknowledge that that's the size because if we're gonna approve it, that's the size we're approving.
That's acknowledged, Jen, absolutely. Five by six.
Thank you.
Yep, you got it. And, uh, and Maria, that the language of the sign would not change, correct?
Yes, that's what I want on the sign.
So it'd be the name, um, and then the phone number and and that's it, right? Correct?
Correct. There's, I, I, there is, no, that's not correct. I'm sorry. There on the bottom, that's the email address.
Got it.
And I believe, um, again, um, email address and, um, website possibly.
Okay, so it's limited to the the information that the board sees before it here.
Oh, the hours, I'm sorry, hours and website.
Okay, hours and website, phone number and name. Okay.
Walter, I just want to clarify and make sure that you you guys are seeing what I'm sharing on the screen, right? Okay, and then just for the board's clarity, this is sheet number two of Mister Siv's most recent, uh, site plan submission.
Yes, thanks, Charlie. Yep. Uh, and again, Maria, you're you're willing to again, remove the dumpster out of the buffer area uh, tomorrow, to the extent you could put it into the, uh, I guess it's the western corner where it's proposed, you'll do that immediately, correct?
Yeah, I have no problem doing that. But again, like I said, I did not realize that I had to do that now. Taking up parking spaces and without having parking spaces.
All right, well, now, now we know what we need again.
Yeah, no problem.
So, all right. Uh, Mister Chairman, nothing further for Mister Campo Real.
To Toto, let me ask the board members if they have any questions for Ms. Camp Reale.
Sure.
Any fellow board members, any questions for the applicant?
Oh, sir.
No, Mister Chairman.
I'm good. Okay, uh, so at this point, I'd like to call Rob Siv.
He there?
I'm here.
Okay. Um, Mister Siv, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please, uh, say your name and spell your last.
Robert Siv, S.I.V. as in Victor E.
Witness is sworn. I guess, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Chairman and members of the board. I know Rob was, uh, qualified and accepted as an expert in civil engineering during the use variance hearing. I'd respect the request. Uh, the same, assuming Rob, your license is in good standing, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay, uh, Rob, without getting into too many of the details here, we're certainly, we're prepared to comply with all of the conditions of all three of the professionals' reports, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, with, I know there was a question with regard to parking, uh, with regard to the language in the resolution. What exactly are we proposing? What did we propose? Let me back up. During the use variance phase, and what are we proposing now as it relates to parking?
The plan that is before the board tonight, the minor site plan is for all intent and purpose identical to the plan that was used as the exhibit for the use variance. There are two very minor changes. One was the sign, which was just discussed. And the other minor change was the rear canopy was originally going to be saved and expanded upon. The applicant, upon further review, is going to reconstruct the existing canopy in the exact same footprint as the existing canopy is there now with the proposed canopy. Um, but other than that, the plans are identical. We previously proposed eleven parking stalls and eleven parking stalls are on this plan.
And we're, we're not proposing any additional square footage to the building, Rob, correct?
That is correct.
And Rob, to clarify, the canopy replacement is already above a concrete patio, so there's no increase in impervious coverage, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and Rob, of course, we can comply with all the conditions of use variance approval as well.
Correct. And as Charlie said, uh, the drainage has been sized for the increase in impervious coverage for the hundred year storm.
Okay, and with regard to septic, we have approval from the County Board of Health?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, and we'll apply to the outside agencies, uh, if the board sees fit to grant this site plan and application, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Mister Chairman, nothing further from Mister Siv.
Thank you. Any board members, any questions for Mister Siv?
Oh, sir.
No, sir.
So Mister Chairman, I'd like to call my final witness, Erica Stahl, our professional planner.
Erica?
Yes.
Please, please warn him.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Sure, Erica, E.R.I.K.A. My last name is Stahl, S.T.A.H.L.
Witness is sworn, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Bear.
Uh, Erica, please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background.
Sure, I graduated with a Bachelor of Science from Rutgers University in two thousand and seven with, um, environmental planning and design, um, degree. And in twenty twelve, I graduated with a master's in city and regional planning from the Edward J. Blastie School of Planning and Public Policy. Um, I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner. I am also accredited with American Institution of Professional Planners, um, so that's my AICP. I have testified, um, in Monmouth and Ocean Counties, as well as other counties in in New Jersey. I also used to be a township planner for Tom's River Township, uh, uh, Ocean County Planner. Um, and I have extensive experience with planning and serving, um, you know, boards, uh, type in on your side as well, uh, planning and.
We accept, we, not to cut you off, but we accept your credentials. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Erica, I, I know you, uh, prepared for this, uh, hearing by reviewing a number of items. Uh, could you, one, describe that, describe the proofs that are required tonight, describe through those proofs and then provide, uh, your final opinion if you want.
Okay, sure. Um, so as part of my testimony, I have visited the site on, um, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I've also reviewed, uh, the Township Land Use Ordinance, um, zoning board of adjustment resolution, uh, memorizing the D-two expansion of use and bulk variances approvals that were, that's dated on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. And, um, I've also reviewed the twenty twenty-two Howl Township Master Plan, the Land Use Element and Circulation Plan Element, um, as well as the Land Use Development Ordinance. Um, so subject property known as three twenty-one West Farms Road, block one fifty-four lot thirteen, contains approximately two point zero four five acres. The property is located within the agricultural rural estates, A.R.E. two Land Use Zone District. And it's an interior lot which fronts on West Farms Road. Um, residential uses are located on the west and south of the property. A farm to assess property is located to the east of the property. Vacant and mostly wooded properties located across the West Farms Road to the north and all the properties adjacent to the property are in also in the A.R. two Land Use Zone. Um, the property is currently developed with a daycare center and ancillary improvements. Um, improvements include a two-story masonry building with a concrete pad, pool, three sheds, a place structure, asphalt driveway and parking area. And on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, the zoning board of adjustment approved the solar panel canopy, a one hundred forty square foot bathroom addition, a five hundred twenty square foot classroom addition, twenty foot by forty foot pole barn, a twenty foot by twenty foot concrete pad, a place structure, a refuse enclosure, an ID sign and four additional parking stalls. Um, so the board granted approval with numerous conditions. The applicant has indicated that they will comply with those conditions. Um, the applicant did bifurcate the application as been noted. Um, due to that, we are here today for site plan approval. And as part of the site plan approval request, the applicant is seeking a wall sign, um, approval for a five by six foot, thirty square foot wall sign. Um, according to your ordinance, chapter two five six dash four A permits a single sign advertising a permitted use or indicating the office of a member of a recognized profession, providing that such signs should not exceed four square feet in area and further provide that no sign shall be artificially illuminated. The thirty square foot wall sign is exceeds that and it's also, um, a second sign. The applicant has already been approved for an ID sign. It should be noted that there is a small existing sign above the doorway. Um, it is very difficult to see, uh, when you are pulling onto the site as I actually found it difficult, um, to identify whether this site was a daycare center or not, um. So I'd never been to the site in the past, um, and I actually did have to walk up closer to the door to actually see the ID sign or the existing sign on the wall. Um, the applicant, the owner had indicated to me that one of, um, their uh, one of the student's parents had, uh, prepared the sign for them.
Mister Chair, if I could just interject, because I know like the hour is getting late. We already evaluated the site. We determined that it was appropriate for a, a daycare center. I take no exception to the proposed sign that they're, they're, um, asking for this evening, which is their only variance. And I know that, you know, I want the, as Mister Toto has has, um, acknowledged, I would like the dumpsters moved, which was a condition of the approval of the last time. And all the things that Charlie had asked for, but as far as I'm concerned, I take no exception to the relief that they're asking for with respect to the signage. And I would submit that I would take no exception if the board were to act in the affirmative on the site plan and this variance.
Got it, Jen. You know, I, I, I concur with you. I mean, this is a life, safety, health for minor children and and it's, and it's appropriate.
I agree.
Yes. Um, but that's not I, you know, the board has its say. So, um, Mister Bear, we, do we need to open this to public?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Okay, board members.
Motion to open the public.
That was Mister Martin's?
Yes.
Second.
Hugh's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eileen, can we open the public for questioning of the planner, the applicant?
The meeting, the meeting will now open to public. If you're calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Mister Chairman, we did lose the planner.
I could probably ask, answer questions if that is the issue. So let's just open it up to the public.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll give it, you know, a few, a minute. I take it, Eileen, you don't see anyone raising their hands, huh?
No, no one's raising their hand from the public yet.
Okay. Okay. No one's joining. Okay, not seeing anyone, can I have a motion to close the public, please?
Motion to close.
Use and canter, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Eileen, we're close to public. So, Jen, we heard from you, Charlie, any last words?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick things, so, there was a couple memos from, I believe, the Fire Bureau and from the Farmers Advisory Board. I just want to note, they had a comment about the existing pool being within the farm buffer, that was reviewed and considered as part of the use variance application. Fire official had a comment about the pole barn being within a hundred and fifty feet of the driveway access. Mr. Siv, that's not changed, and that's still within a hundred and fifty feet, correct?
That is correct.
Regarding outside agency approvals, obviously, applicant's gonna have to get utility department approval, Monmouth County Planning Board, Field Soil Conservation District, if it's over five thousand square feet. Provide the Monmouth County Board of Health approval, that was alluded to as part of the testimony. And then, just for building permits, obviously, applicant's gonna have to provide actual architectural plans for the expansion, the canopy, and all that things to the township, and I just asked, and I think it was testified previously, that all additions will be architecturally consistent with the existing structure, so not to look out of place, that's correct, Mr. Toto?
Correct, absolutely, yes.
And you did agree to submit to both my office and Charlie's office for our sign-off on the architecturals.
Absolutely, Jen, yes, will do.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, Charlie. So, Mr. Bear?
Mr. Chairman, this is ready for consideration by the board.
Thank you, sir. So, fellow board members, this is a application that we have previously heard, and they're in front of us for a minor site plan modification, which is the sign, and I'd like to know what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the sign, and I agree with your patient a little bit earlier, I think with Jen, about the, the safety of it, and I, I just think it's a prudent thing to do, and I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Hughes and Mr. Stanton, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Based on the testimony put tonight, yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Provided that the hundred-year stormwater is gonna be implemented, absolutely, yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you, and I just want to know, Jen, I will call you, and Mr. Bear, if he wants me to call him as well, with regard to the movement of the, of the dumpster.
Great, thank you.
Well, you can just send me an email if you want.
Sure thing, will do, I appreciate it. Thank you again for your time this evening, enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, so, Eileen? This concludes the agenda, when is the next meeting?
It is September twelfth.
September twelfth.
Oh, my goodness, summer's gone.
And then the, the following is the nineteenth, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, and then we get into October? And we see each other. Are we gonna be meeting in person in October?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Just so everyone knows, Mr. Martins?
Yes.
You will have November fourteenth to run that meeting.
Okay, thanks for the, that's up.
You're welcome. Okay, so, you know, everyone, thank you, thank you for your service, and your commitment to making Hallow Township a better place to live.
Thank you for your leadership in this, Mr. Siv.
And you got three cases done in less than.
Yeah, that was quick, Paul.
And, and the, and your retirement beard looks pretty good on you.
Oh, it's, it's starting to feel good, too.
Oh, yeah, you're joining, you're joining the beard crowd, huh, Paul?
Yes, I am, Hughes. All right, everyone, listen, everyone, have a very safe Labor Day, day, weekend, holiday, extended holiday, and take good care of yourself, and, you know, we'll see you in, on the other side of the holiday, okay?
Good night, everybody.
Just a motion, a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We got a, a motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye, have a good night, guys.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.